Welcome to the regular meeting, council meeting of Tuesday, October 19th, 2021 at 4:40 PM. Meeting called to order and we'll have a moment of silence. Motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on October 19th, 2021, beginning at 4:40 PM, be approved as circulated to all members of council with the addition of item 12.1 to discuss a vaccination policy.
All in favor? Motion carried. Any declaration of pecuniary interest?
Yes, your worship, I'd like to declare item 6.5, even though I'm not in council at the moment, I may well be. My business, that is, so I would declare that as a conflict. Item number 6.5.
Okay, clearly noted. Petitions and delegations. Is Isabel Reum, or we're just reading the document?
No, I am in attendance.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Isabel.
Hello. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you all today in regards to keeping the dog park open for use during the winter months. So as mentioned in my delegation request form, the dog park is a safe place for dogs to be off leash, run freely and socialize with other dogs. It's also one of the only areas where dogs are permitted due to bylaws in our community. So schoolyards, civic ball fields, so on. Dogs are not permitted. So unlike many seasonal services, the town provides baseball, snowshoeing, splash park, outdoor rinks. The dog park, it's not really a seasonal activity. Exercise is something that our furry friends require all year round. Having access to the dog park in the winters especially beneficial as walking can be at times unsafe or difficult, particularly for our seniors. Dog park is a service that the community spoke up and said we needed, such so much as a group of people got together, did fundraising and got the project going. It was also deemed an essential service during the worldwide pandemic where it remained open even through lockdown situations. I understand there is a cost to keeping the park open all year. But that's true for everything, any service that we run. So I have provided some cost-saving suggestions in my delegation request. Essentially, that's, that's it. And just looking for something, somewhere safe, we can keep our dogs running around during the winter months.
Thank you. Any comments from council members? Counselor White?
I would certainly support staff investigating this. So at the end of the meeting, when it comes time to bring forth notice of motion, I'll go ahead and do that at that time.
Counselor Owen.
As we are well aware, there are many pressures on us in terms of spending money. I I happen to think that a good alternative that could keep the dog park open and not cost the taxpayers anything would be for this group to work out a similar arrangement as Tolburn Operating Authority, Culver Park Operating Authority and the Soccer Association have, where they lease the park for a dollar a year. They maintain it and they keep, they keep it open and and that way it could be open 12 months a year and it wouldn't impact on the rate pairs of the town. And if staff is going to investigate keeping it open, I would suggest that this would be an alternative that staff may want to look into as well. Thank you.
Any thoughts on that, Isabel?
It's definitely something I can bring back to a lot of the regular attendees at the dog park to look at as an option. Absolutely.
Okay, I think we can include that in Counselor White's motion for part of the consideration. Any other comments? I think you have, you've looked at this the right way as far as the cost savings and obviously you're open to any suggestion that will make this work. So appreciate that. As Counselor White said, we will come back with a motion to send this to staff with the recommendations and certainly all your recommendations will be considered. And we should be able to bring it back possibly at the next council meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
You know, hopefully get it settled before the snow drops.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thanks, Isabel.
Take care.
So your worship, since this is an item listed on the agenda, we can speak to this motion right now. So currently we have it to be received and it just so happens that I had Counselor White as the mover. So the draft wording I've put based on the conversation is to receive the delegation and have staff be directed to report back with options of how to operate the dog park year round.
Any comments? Counselor Owen?
If it's okay with Counselor White, I would like included in there about the forming a partnership with the group. That's in line with our strategic plan. And it also is in line in terms of providing optimum service. It's also in line with that in the strategic plan. So if that could be included in the motion, if Counselor White's agreeable.
My only fear with that is that the dog park is a free service, whereas soccer members have to pay to use the service. So if we're going to start charging people to use the dog park to be able to just have a loader go through it, it might become too cumbersome as a task to keep the service going.
Counselor White?
So I do believe that it should be investigated. A possible partnership could be investigated by staff. However, I do worry about the liability. There's been liability questions in the past when it comes to Culver Park and other partnerships that we have. So I know that there was some previous concerns about that, but I see no harm in having staff investigate a possible partnership. Absolutely.
Yes, because these operating authorities, Counselor Owen, they do have liability insurance. So it is a consideration. Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I was just going to say in all the agreements, the that we have partnerships with community organizations. There is a requirement for liability insurance. And as far as there being a charge, that's if we reached an agreement, a partnership agreement with them, that's not our call. That's their call. And they're free to do fundraising. They're free to get, maybe, maybe somebody on that committee can do the plowing for them free. You know, it's, I'm just concerned about taking limited resources and, and putting them on a optional service that a lot of communities don't even have. So, thank you.
Could you read the motion?
So I've added to the motion, or in full, it is moved by Stacy White, seconded by Casey Owens, be it resolved that the delegation from Isabel Reum for requesting the dog park to be open in the winter months be received and that staff be directed to report back with options of how to operate the dog park year round, including the potential option of a partnership to operate.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number five, acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Casey Owens, be it resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings, minutes of the regular meeting of council held October 5th, 2021.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number six, reports of municipal officers and communications, swim pass donation request, Ms. Bonnie Sacre, Director of Community Services. Bonnie?
Thank you, your worship. Through you two council, we have received a request from CJKL for their annual spooktacular once again. This is something that the town has been giving donations to for probably well over 15 years. And the concept is that the young children go out and trick or treat on Halloween and starting at 7:00 PM at night, volunteers call the different homes to see if the children are home, ask them what their costume was, how their night was, and if they are home at that time, they are eligible for a spooktacular bag. So the value of a swim pass is $4.42. If we did 250 of them, it is over $1,000 of donation dollars that we would be attributing. If we look back to 2019, which was the last year we did this due to COVID last year, 26 passes were turned in. So it's just over $100 in value for that year of what the cost was.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, no, I think it's a good donation. I think it's well received in the community and it's a good way of giving her a little bit of exposure to maybe some kids that wouldn't get in there and nothing wrong with, with giving away 250 and having even half of them redeemed. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. Any other comments? Concerns? None? Motion?
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff, be it resolved that memorandum number 2021-CS-021 entitled swim pass donation request be received and that staff be directed to prepare 250 swim passes for the CJKL Spooktacular annual event and expense the cost of the passes submitted to the Community Grants Fund account.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.2, franchise agreement renewal. Megan Elliott, Clerk?
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. This is more of a housekeeping item for process to renew or establish a new agreement with Enbridge Gas. So it only happens every 20 years. So I'm the lucky staff that gets to do it this time around. So with corresponding with them, they've sent very detailed instructions of how we go through this process. So later in the agenda, you will see that there's a draft bylaw that will need a first and second reading today. And then it gets sent back to them to do what they need on their end, comes back to us with further details and goes, comes back for a third reading. So for today, I'm looking to pass the motion that is recommended in front of you, that needs to be submitted to them as well. Later in the meeting, we'll give it two readings and we'll go from there.
Any comments from council or concerns? I think our relationship with Enbridge has been fully satisfactory since they came into the area. I don't see anything negative here.
And I should note that I have spoke with Public Works on this and there wasn't any concerns. There was one process question that they relayed to me that I've been speaking with them for how to address. So we're looking into that, but other than that, we're, we're happy with it as well.
We'll go to motion?
Moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Rick Owen, be it resolved that memorandum number 2021-CLK-023M entitled franchise agreement renewal be received, that council for the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake approves the draft bylaw and franchise agreement attached here too and authorizes the submission thereof to the Ontario Energy Board for approval pursuant to the provisions of Section 9 of the Municipal Franchises Act. And that TKL Council requests that the Ontario Energy Board make an order declaring and directing that the ascent of the municipal electors to the attached draft bylaw and franchise agreement pertaining to the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake is not necessary pursuant to provisions of Section 9, 4 of the Municipal Franchise Act.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 6.3, Ontario Clean Water Agency, Aqua, contract amendments. Jim Roman, Director of Public Works. Jim?
Thank you, your worship, through you, council. I'm here tonight to discuss renewing the operating contract that we have with Ontario Clean Water Agency. Just for your information, I've asked members from Aqua to be present tonight and they're here to answer any questions that you might have. So representing Aqua, we have Eric Nielsen, their regional manager for Aqua, Sylvie Lemieux, who's their business development manager for Northeastern Ontario, and Anthony Dennis, their senior operations manager. So as far as the contract that we have, for 28 years, Aqua's been operating our wastewater treatment plant here in town. And since January of 2015, this partnership was expanded to include operation of the water treatment plant as well as the Swastika wastewater treatment plant. Our current contract with them expires at the end of this year, but there is a provision in the contract that allows for renegotiation and extensional contract for an additional two-year period. I discussed this with Don Studholm, the CAO at the time, and he directed me to approach Aqua for this extension. And I'm here tonight to recommend that we proceed with it. Aqua is a Crown, Crown agency, an Ontario Crown agency, and the largest one actually. And they manage 820 treatment facilities in Ontario and 75% of the water treatment facilities that are operated, that are outsourced. So locally, they've provided us with exceptional service. They've responded to local and regulatory influences with continuous improvement in services. And they've managed a number of capital improvements for us, always with an eye towards innovation and cost savings. They, they were behind the, the change to variable drives on our high lift pumps, which you know, which, which are producing significant savings for us. And actually, they're a lot easier on the distribution system. And they, they step up when it, when it matters. When we had the collapse of the sewage treatment plant or when we need to tackle the town's brown water issues, Aqua's always been there for us. We also benefit from the fact that their, that their hub is here in town. They have a team of operators, technicians, mechanics that support not just us, but the entire Northeast region. And we also have access to their network of operating and compliance professionals. Just this morning, I met with staff from Aqua at the water plant and their Director of Innovation Efficiency and Optimization was on site there looking at upgrades to the low lift pumps. This is the type of thing that you don't see with, with any other contractor. It, it's consulting service they provide us at no additional cost. And at times has resulted in significant energy savings. And they, they help us to, to identify where we can make improvements and, and how to secure funding for these improvements. So they're a real team player. Finally, recent legislation and regulatory changes dictates that everyone with oversight of treatment facilities be held to a standard of care defined by the Ministry of the Environment. And there's a definite advantage to this in that we're able to share the responsibilities and particularly personal liability that we're all exposed to. We're able to share this with, with an agency of the Crown. So that's, that's a definite advantage in dealing with Aqua. So they've proposed a few changes to the fee structure, the main one being removal of the processed chemicals and to proceed on a cost plus basis. Other than that, they've proposed a 2% inflationary increase, which is quite reasonable. So it, it's my opinion that it's in best interest of the town to continue this partnership. And I recommend we extend this agreement or the additional two years. So if there's any questions?
Jim, the budget for 2021, I'm assuming that there was a 2% increase from 2020?
Yes, there, there was inflationary costs built into the existing contract as well.
So basically following the same formula, I guess you would say?
Yes. Now, as I said, they've taken, they've taken the chemical costs out of the contract. We, we will be paying for that over and above now the, the contract, but we're still able to capitalize on their, on their buying power. They, they purchase chemicals for the province and
in bulk, yeah.
Ever be able to see those prices on their own.
Counselor Shaba?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Jim. I'm looking at the very last page of your presentation here. Just can you explain what is it? The, what do you mean by an adjustment to maintain insurance coverage? What is the insurance coverage now in this particular? Is there liability coverage or what is that all about?
Well, it, it's Aqua's insurance costs. They, they've separated that from the inflationary increase. So they've asked us to cover whatever cost, additional cost there is to their insurance going forward.
So what are we, what are we actually insuring? Like the vehicles, the, what is it? The insurance is actually, I mean, if you say a home insurance, maybe I don't understand that. Business insurance, liability insurance, you understand. I'm not too sure, not very clear what this insurance, I mean, what is it? What does it cover?
Maybe I could ask Eric to elaborate on that? Or Sylvie?
Is Sylvie here?
Okay.
Yes, oh, yeah.
Sorry, Eric, I didn't know if you were on or not. Do you want me to take this one?
Yeah, go ahead, Sylvie. Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Jim, your worship, members of council. So the insurance that is included in the agreement, and it always was, was contractor environmental liability and contractor general liability. So that covers Aqua's costs. Now, the, the automobile insurance, we haven't factored into what this increase is because it's, it's been sort of in par on what we've, we've always estimated. But this is just the increase to our costs for general liability and environmental liability. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
It seems high. I just, if I may, it seems high, but what happened is last year we saw a significant increase as well and we just chose to absorb that increase last year and not bill it out to the town. There is a clause in our agreement that says that the annual price is increased by, by an inflationary adjustment plus an adjustment for insurance because the insurance is renewed annually, but we never have increased it. We absorbed it last year. So this year, it's really the increase we're, we're seeing over two years. We know, we've been told that the increase on the liabilities are 25% for 2022. So we factor that into here. Thank you.
Yeah, if I may follow with that, since you guys run other plants too, do you, this insurance increase here is as a portion to the Kirkland Lake one out of the whole? Or, I mean, how do you figure out which percentage?
It's based on the value of the contract. So Aqua figures out what the cost is across the province. And then it's parceled out based, there's a value that they associate to the value of the contract.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or concerns? We have a motion?
I have a motion moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Stacy White, be it resolved that report number 2021-PW-10 entitled Ontario Clean Water Agency Aqua Contract Amendment be received, that council hereby accepts the amending agreement with Aqua for operations and maintenance services of the water and wastewater treatment systems and that staff be directed to present a bylaw to authorize the execution of an amending agreement with the Ontario Clean Water Agency, extending the existing contract for an additional, additional two-year term at an annual cost of $761,380 for 2022 and adjusted for 2023 as per the terms of the amending agreement.
Any further questions? Noted. All in favor? Motion carried?
Okay, I'd like to thank representatives from Aqua for your participation.
Thank you. And we'd like to thank council, if we may, for entrusting us with the care of your water and wastewater services for the next two years. Thank you.
Well, just to kind of double up on Jim's comments, he's quite correct in what he's saying. When we've had problems with the system, especially the brown water, we came to Aqua and instead of costing us a fortune, was able to fix the problem and make a lot of people happy in town, especially when they were doing their laundry. So we appreciate the relationship and the service that, that we are getting for, through this contract. So thank you. Item 6.4, supply and delivery of winter sand, MO and stockpile. Mr. Roman again?
Okay, thank you, your worship, through you to council. This is an annual annual purchase where we stockpile our winter sand and winter sand salt mix. So we issued a request for tenders and the results came back with the low bid being to Amir on topsoil limited for $30,210 plus HST. We've always had success dealing with this particular contract in the past and I have no reservations about recommending that we go ahead and purchase it from them again. So I'm, I'm recommending that, that we accept their price and move ahead with this before the snow flies.
Yeah, Jim, just as Counselor Ivanoff mentioned, the first bid that came in at 112,500, were they looking at doing something item A only? What? They're totally at a whack cup as compared to the other two participants. Any thoughts on that?
I would have to pull that one, actually. Or what, what's that price like? I more or less just ignored that one being so in line with what we typically pay.
See why?
But I can get back to Counselor Ivanoff with an answer on that.
Counselor Owens? Yeah. Jim, in your report, there's a liner that says remixing with salt is necessary as we do not have indoor storage for winter sand. I've seen this line come back to us a few times since we've been on council. Is there a reason why we don't have one of those cement slabs with a tarp over top of it, like where a teepee or something that, is this something? If it's going to cost us money every year, is it something we should seriously start taking seriously to investigate?
Yes, I would agree with you that you certainly need something like that. I've always got an eye out for potential funding or something like that. Because again, it's, it's a, a permanent structure is quite prosperous. So I would hope to find some funding. A a a permanent structure is quite prosperous, so I I would hope to find uh some funding somewhere. But it's definitely on the list of things that we need.
Councillor Owen.
Yeah, Jim, would it be possible to to um? Get one of those structures, but spread it over um two budgets? Uh, would it be possible to put the cement pad in? The one year, which at least gives us a little bit of environmental protection and then budget the next year for the uh. Covering to protect the uh salt and sand from the uh elements?
Oh yeah, certainly, and uh i- if it's something that uh you would like to discuss when when the time comes for the capital budget. Uh, we we can certainly do some some investigation ahead of time here.
Yeah, I know that uh council was made aware of this, uh, I believe it's one of our consultants pointed out to us a potential uh. Liability that we face. Um, the other issue is that. Um, currently, apparently our sand piles are not entirely on Kirkland Lake owned property. Um, I'm wondering. If at least that part could be addressed this year, perhaps somehow by. Summary arrangement uh uh of the uh. Like, the property so that we can at least get it back on our own property. Uh, I don't know if that's feasible because I I live close there and I see how big the piles are and you need X number of parking for your staff and everything else. But maybe we could address that this year?
Definitely, I'll uh, I'll I'll make sure I look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No further comments? We have a motion.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Lad Shaba, be it resolved that report number two thousand twenty-one dash P W dash zero eleven. Entitled supply and deliver winter sand mix and stockpile be received. That council hereby awards a contract to A Myron Topsoil Limited for R F T five seven two two one. Which is to supply winter sand and to mix the leftover sand stockpile from winter twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. With fresh salt in the amount of thirty thousand two hundred ten dollars plus H S T. And that staff be directed to present a bylaw to execute an agreement with A Myron Topsoil Limited for the above noted contract.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point five. Awarding of contract N W L. Uh, K L Gold Water and Sewer Servicing and Chappie Hughes Distribution Upgrades. Mr. Roman again.
Hey, thank you, your worship, for you to counsel. Um, this, this report is uh. Concerns the the servicing of uh the number four shaft with with water and sewer. Uh, we're proposing that uh they connect um at the intersection there of Archer Drive and Highway sixty-six. So uh, as far as this contract goes, we uh. Um, we we received the tenders uh for this. Uh, there, there's three components to this project, the first being the water and sewer service for the number four shaft. Which involves um light placing the casings under the highway and then and then running the the service lines through there. And connecting to our uh existing distribution system. Uh, at the same time, we're looking at installing a a flow meter in the chamber at the Chappie standpipe and this is. Uh, required for better control uh of of the operating the sand pipe. And then third, it's the, it includes replacement of uh three main line water valves in the in the valve chamber. Uh, next to the miners monument. And these uh, the existing valves right now are inoperable. And uh, it it it's necessary, we need these valves in in order to isolate our our distribution system into manageable sections. Otherwise, um, uh, if we have, we'd have to shut down entire sections of town. So um, we'd like to go ahead with these. Uh, this project also initially included the creation of a uh pressure zone uh in Chappie Hughes. But um, through um water modeling being done for us uh by E X P consultants. Um, i- it it looks like we're gonna have to give this a little more thought before we we go ahead with it. And it would actually require um additional unbudgeted uh costs. So for the sake of uh not holding up uh the the more pressing issues. Um, I opted to go ahead and tender uh this at this time. Um, do have the funding in place for this work through a combination of Fednar funding, N O H S C funding. As well as uh contribution from K L Gold and uh drawdown of uh reserve funds. So uh, two, two tenders were received, the one from Peterson Construction being the low bid. Uh, and so I'm recommending at this point that we go ahead and accept, accept the tender and move ahead with this contract. Uh, also noted in here, uh, budget wise, there there would be a a surplus of approximately hundred seventy thousand dollars. But as I said earlier, um, we still have the Chappie Hughes Pressure Zone. Not to deal with, so those funds would be uh directed towards that that part of the project.
Jim, would you be allowed to disclose the contribution uh from uh the mining company?
Um, a- at this time, it hasn't, it's, it's not a hundred percent definite. And we we do have a commitment from K L Gold, but uh until.
So you have the check in your hand, yeah.
I'd be a little reluctant to 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 state. But they they have indicated their their commitment to the project. It 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 is essentially to serve number four shaft with with sewer and water.
Uh councillor Owens. Yeah, when we start, or when this line goes into service, will this have an impact on the? Or, like, I've heard that the pressure is really low in Chappie as it is, will this have a negative impact on their water pressure even worse?
Um, no, it it it's not going to have a significant impact on on uh Chappie use, e- e- essentially. Like, we're, it it's to service the uh, the the, the operating uh at the shaft, the 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 dry. It's a large water main, but it, that's primarily for fire protection and uh.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that part, like, and I'm like, yeah, you wanna be able to take a shower, you need to operate the dries and whatever, but. Is this water gonna be fed off of the same line that feeds Chappie? Like, if we've got residents complaining that. Uh, and I've seen a video over the summer where there's about three inches of water coming out of the sprinkler, so I'm not sure. If that was manipulated in some fashion or if it's truly that low, what, three inches of water out of your sprinkler? I wouldn't wanna lose more pressure than what I already have.
Yeah, no, we do recognize that there is a serious pressure issue in Chappie use. But um servicing uh the mine, particularly where we're looking at servicing it, which is um at the. At at the Archer intersection, uh, it it's not going to have a. Significant impact on what's already.
Alright, thank you.
I'm, yeah, cause this subject that councillor Owens has brought up, but the water pressure has been an ongoing. Problem, I would say, for quite some time, and there are a number of people, especially around the village area that uh. Require auxiliary pumps just to get the water coming through the top, so uh. It's good that that hundred ninety-five or hundred and seventy-five, whatever you said, is going to be uh looking at that project uh. Capital project uh to get that fixed.
Yeah, as I.
A few of us are.
It's going to require additional study and uh, I didn't wanna hold up. Um, the servicing to the mine, which, no, they've got a hard deadline which which we need to meet.
Okay, that's good news because we've probably collectively told the people that it will be, this will improve. But it won't, may not be till next year, from the sounds of it. But I appreciate uh it's budgeted for and the money is uh put away in reserve for that purpose. So, thank you for the update. Any other comments or councillor White?
So do we have staff's commitment that this water pressure issue in Chappie use? Will be top priority in the upcoming year? That was a very large selling point. To this whole um situation when it began, that's what got many. Members of council on board for this project to begin with, is we were going to kind of hit two birds with one stone. And now to hear today that that's not going to happen will be disappointing to many members of our community. So do we have staff commitments that that will be made a priority in the upcoming year?
Yes, I I'm not saying that that issue is going to be dealt with, it's it's just that. To to deal with it at this point, hold up. Um, these other issues which which need to be addressed. Um, K L Gold has has a uh a definite. Date where they require the servicing to be done, and I I didn't want to miss that. But certainly the Chappie use pressure uh system is is still on the table.
Councillor Owen.
Um, I would feel much better if I heard that it would be included in your capital budget next year. Um, because then, or that money will be set aside in your capital budget. Because it sounds to me like it's gonna cost more than the hundred and seventy-five thousand uh that's currently there. Um. I I would like some assurance that it will be included in in uh next year's capital budget. That way, the, you know, the residents of Chappie Hughes who have uh. Dealt with this problem for a number of years will have some reassurance that we're not just sitting here at the table saying, yeah, we're gonna do it some year sometime down the road. Um, I don't know if that's possible, but I know I'd feel better as a councillor if if it was included in next year's budget.
And I'll certainly have something at at budget time, but as I indicated that. There, it's going to be costlier than than what was initially proposed. Um, what 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 we've sort of discovered along the way is is the need for some additional. Capital input here.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. No further comments? We have a motion.
Moved by Casey Owen, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that report number two thousand twenty-one dash P W dash twelve entitled awarding of contract N W L. Zero two zero zero one zero four six, K L Gold Water and Sewer Servicing and Chappie Hughes Distribution Upgrades be received. That council hereby awards the contract to Peterson Construction two thousand thirteen Inc. To construct the K L Gold Water and Sewer Servicing and Chappie Hughes Distribution Upgrades for the tendered. Amount of one million nine hundred thirty thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars twenty cents plus H S T. And that staff be directed to present a bylaw to authorize the execution of an agreement with Peterson Construction two thousand thirteen Inc. for the above noted contract.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item number seven, whoop, thank you. Item number seven, consideration of notices of motions. There are one, two, three, four, five. Uh, each motion will require a seconder. So we'll start with the seven point one, a motion of councillor Ivanoff's request. Wanna read?
So councillor Ivanoff has moved a motion that reads that staff be directed to report to council on how many Kirkland Lake properties have outstanding taxes of more than one year, two years, three years or more. And how many were registered this year? And that staff be directed to provide information on how many delinquent tax property owners own more than one property and what legal efforts the town is making to collect the rental income.
Comments, councillor White?
Also second.
Well, I just have a.
Go ahead, councillor.
Okay. Um, just worried about the privacy of this uh, this people, like, do we not, we're not gonna be breaching privacy?
We're not asking for names, we're just asking for property owners. We're not asking for names.
Just property owners.
Yeah, we just wanna know what's been, how many properties have outstanding taxes of one year, two year, three year or more, cause some could be ten years. That haven't paid taxes, just, we don't need the property owner's names, we just need to know how many properties. And then, cause you know, we have a lot of money outstanding, you just have a lot of money outstanding and I just wanna see where that is. And then I know there's, uh, we had spoken to the tax collector one time and he said there were property owners that had more than one property, assuming they were renting property out. Are we collecting the rents or are we just ignoring the the fact that they have two or three or four properties and are not paying taxes to the town of Kirkland Lake?
I think uh, y- your point's well taken, councillor Ivanoff, and that included uh the the number of uh. Buildings and residents that aren't paying taxes and the dollar amount in arrears so that uh. We know what we have tied up in arrears. I think it'll shock us, most of us. We did kind of a verbal one a while back and it was pretty scary, so it'd be nice to get an update, I agree. Councillor White, uh, sorry, councillor Owen.
Yeah, just, just to clarify for the residents, um, when someone is behind in their property taxes. And they are renting that property out to someone else, the town can take legal action to have the rent. That the tenant is paying applied to the back taxes. And I know councillor Ivanoff alluded to that, but I'm sure a lot of residents didn't know we have that power. And the town has used that power in the past on one occasion that I know of, and actually I think two occasions. Um, it's certainly a useful tool to helping to to bring back those revenues. Thank you.
Yeah, I I agree with you councillor Owen, and actually I don't think we'd have to take legal action. I I believe under the act, we we can attain the the rents and have them sent to the town. But it'd be good to know where we're at, that's for sure. Any other comments? Give a motion.
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Stacy White. That staff be directed to report to council on how many Kirkland Lake properties have outstanding taxes of more than one year, two years, three years or more. And how many were registered this year? And that staff be directed to provide information on how many delinquent tax property owners own more than one property and what legal efforts is the town making to collect the rental income?
All in favor? Motion carried. Seven point two, councillor Ivanoff, uh, with regards to. Uh, Chappie use, uh, derelict buildings.
It's actually the village in Chappie that I was referring to, yes.
So looking for a seconder on councillor Ivanoff's motion, uh, looks like I can say Rick Owen. And uh, he has a motion that reads that staff be directed to report back. To council with what has been done and what can be done with enforcing property standard and building issues in Chappie Hughes Village. And that the Kirkland Lake Fire Department visit the same area and report to council on how or if they could handle a fire in that area.
Councillor White?
I really appreciate how this motion was written. It really addresses the community safety. Um, that is at question and bringing the fire department in on this was brilliant. Thank you, councillor Ivanoff.
It's been a long, ongoing problem for years and quite honestly. I wouldn't recommend that anybody even light up a cigarette in that area, level to burn a house down. It it, it's pretty scary and and the people that live out there, they they deserve better. So we have to move forward and take some action that's been sitting for years. The councillor Ivanoff.
Yeah, your worship, I, I mean, I. Your worship, I mean, I've driven through Chappie Hughes and it's, they've got some beautiful homes, well-kept, manicured lawns, great looking homes and next door, there's a garage or a house that's falling in to their yard and there's many homes that are side by side with inches apart that would easily, if one caught fire, I don't know how they would ever be able to to solve the fire issue. And the streets there are narrow because of the construction of the the site when it was built way back, probably in early 1900s. And it's, it's just a, you see these nice homes and you see these dilapidated, rundown places. And I don't know what can be done and what the cost would be, but it just can't continue on in this fashion without risking lives in my estimation. Thank you.
Well, I agree and it certainly, when we have visitors or relatives coming up to Kirkland Lake and they drive through there. I mean, it is not very nice to see. We have a lot of pride in our, in our community, but that just throws it out the door. Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I know a resident spoke to me, put in a request for service over a month ago and nothing has happened. And Counselor White mentioned about the fire department being mentioned here. And that was one of this resident's main concerns. That a building next to the building she owns would burn down and she would lose hers as well. I did a drive by again today just to refresh my memory. And the area of Chappie Hughes where this person that filled out the request for service lives, there's three deserted homes right in row, all wooden structures. One, the garage just caved in. Well, that would be our building department. Another one, the post holding up the carport is broken, structural again. In addition to the fire department and the building department, I think also our minimum property standards should be involved as well. In some cases, there's old mattresses sitting in the yards, the grass is unkept. I think all three departments should go at it. And, you know, we have a responsibility to all the ratepayers of Kirkland Lake. And while it may cost the ratepayers money to tear these places down if the owners are unwilling to do so, I think we owe it to the people that are there to keep them safe. The other thing is, and Counselor Ivanoff did mention it. Now I did, I noticed the derelict houses today. I also noticed a number of houses in the same area, which is not right on government road there that have been fixed up and kept very nicely. And, you know, all you gotta do is turn the corner and you're looking at a disaster. I praise the residents of Chappie Hughes because Chappie Hughes certainly looks much different than it did when I moved here 40 years ago. There's been a real improvement. And I think from a safety perspective, from a property value perspective to the people that had faith and invested in this town, we owe it to make sure something is done. Thank you.
No further comments? We have a motion?
Moved by Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Rick Owen. That staff be directed to report back to council with what has been done and what can be done with enforcing property standards and building issues in Chappie Hughes Village and that the Kirkland Lake Fire Department visit the same area and report to council on how or if they could handle a fire in that area.
All in favor? Motion carried. Counselor Shaba with respect to land acknowledgement? Put on the agenda? You have a secondar? Counselor White?
So moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Stacy White. That staff be directed to include a land acknowledgement on top of the agenda for all council meetings as soon as the appropriate language is agreed upon by all parties.
Discussion?
Well, I think it basically is becoming standard in any of the meetings that I attend anyways. The worship member, we had the meeting with Ontario Northland people and they started with that. And I think out of respect to our fellow indigenous brothers and sisters, I mean, that's the least we could do here on behalf of our community. So I urge you to support this motion.
Any other comments? We have a motion?
And if I can just comment through your worship to Counselor Shaba, if you noticed on today's agenda, I tested out our new agenda program for the top message on the agenda, so I know that we can do it easily. Because I wanted to see if that was going to be an issue or not, but. So moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Stacy White. That staff be directed to include a land acknowledgement on top of the agenda for all council meetings as soon as the appropriate language is agreed upon by all parties.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 7.4, Counselor Shaba. Breakdown of revenues and years of life on the solar farm. Perhaps we could have, that was kind of clarified. There's a meeting coming up. If Director Oz would maybe comment on that?
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. I have extended the invitation to the project manager from Cap Energy to attend the November 2nd council meeting. He is on vacation right now, so I have not received confirmation, but we'll try to make it as early in November as possible. That would then give us a board meeting, appointment of new members as well as a full account to council as to the progress of the project, the revenue streams, the anticipated timelines and any other outstanding issues according to the fit contracts.
Counselor White?
So Will, what kind of recourse do we have if this meeting doesn't happen? We've been sitting on council for three years and we've received zero updates from this company. So at what point do you feel it would be necessary to escalate this issue?
I'm not really sure that there's an issue to escalate because there were board meetings at CAO McGee and the mayor, and then I believe afterward Keith Gorman had attended. And I think one of those gentlemen had made a brief report to council. The financials have been approved recently and the project is continuing. I think that perhaps give the fellow a chance to answer your questions. There is a misperception that has to be addressed and that is that we should be getting $300,000 or $400,000 a year. Well, you are getting a revenue stream. I'm not in a position to say what that is. But from that revenue stream, you're also paying for the solar farm. Right? For the construction, the financing and that. And I think that that is a misperception that is important to address as well as the general operating of the facilities. I think that he can address that very well. He is the person that is running the projects throughout the Northern Ontario.
Wolf, if I may comment? Try not to let it the information that shouldn't be out there, but when we originally went for the financing on this project and it was approved by a large insurance company. It was pretty well laid out what the conditions were before the town and the town of Kappus casing could take any money out of it. It kind of changed along the way because they backed out because Ontario Power Corporation or whoever it is, they were getting out of the, getting out, stopping from giving new licenses out. We were grandfathered, so we were a little late getting the project complete. But one of the conditions that was in there that our new financing lender put in was that at all times, six months payments had to be kept on deposit, basically in reserve at all times. When the financial statements come in a couple of weeks ago, Wolf and I, we've both seen them. And that is definitely there. There's a fairly hefty deposit in the account. I think one of the questions that council wants to know is when are we going to start seeing some payback on this now that we've met that condition? But at some point, it'd be nice to get, I never heard the figure of 300,000 or 400,000. I always thought it was in the 150 to 175 range on the projections and they were they were audited by an independent firm at the time. But $175,000 to the town of Kirkland Lake would be better in our pockets than sitting in a bank account if we have it.
That is true. The payments to the town, however, would be escalating as well over the period of the contract. So the payments going into the financial institutions as well as, you know, for the construction, the maintenance of the fit, or sorry, of the solar farms would all be deducted from the revenue stream. And as those costs go down, then the amount that is attributed to the town directly increases. That was the explanation under the pro forma presentation that was made in, I think, June of 2018. Again, you were absolutely correct. The project started later than was originally anticipated. That cut into the stream and then that obviously would have affected the entire revenue projections. That is something that I've asked Mr. Nado to give you an update on. What are the projections? Where is the money going? How does that affect the stream that's coming to the municipality? How will that stream coming to the municipality change over time? Those are the questions that I had posed to him.
Okay. Yep. As I said, we're getting anxious. We've been in it three years, haven't seen any money. So at some point, show me the money. Counselor Ivanoff?
Sorry, yeah, Wolf, the other thing that Counselor Shaba had here was the the years of life of the solar farm. And then what happens after that? I know that wasn't addressed in your comments, but if you can ask Mr. Nado that same question too, to find out how long this solar farm will last and how long the income will last for Kirkland Lake? And then what do we do with a million pounds of plastic? When the solar farm fails to produce electricity? Thank you.
Yes, sir, I have put that question to them as well as what are the options once a fit contracts expire to sell the energy independently? If the solar farm is still producing, what can we do with that? That will be a wholly owned asset at that point of KL Solar. And if we could use that for other facilities in the municipality, that would be fantastic, but I don't know. That's still 20 years into the future.
Yeah, our contract with Ontario Power Corporation is a 20-year contract. And I think that I believe our amortization on our loan for that portion is geared towards that, but it will decrease with interest rates on the unpaid balance. So it'll be closer to the two-thirds of the contract, probably before we'd see something like 300,000, but it's not it's not beyond the realm of possibility, but at the beginning, I don't think that's reasonable. Any other comments? Motion carries?
I don't believe we had a secondar. Is there someone who wants a second?
I'm not sure what the motion would be though.
Oh.
I know that we have a report coming, so maybe it's just that we have a report.
I would suggest still just passing the motion as it was, and we know that some things are in the works. We have it proposed that moved by Lad Shaba, that staff be directed to provide a breakdown of revenue and years of life of the solar farm on Archer Drive.
I'll second.
Okay. So moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. That staff be directed to provide a breakdown of revenue and years of life of the solar farm on Archer Drive.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item 7.5. Fleet management plan. Information, Counselor Owen brought this forward. You have a secondar? Counselor White?
The motion reads, moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Stacy White. That staff be directed to present a fleet management plan for relevant information pertinent for the budget approval process.
Counselor Owen?
This is something I've discussed in the past three years several times. It's gone nowhere. It's certainly in line with our strategic plan. It would result in better service to the ratepayers of Kirkland Lake. It would result in more efficient use of funds. But for me, the really, other than the savings that it potentially could bring, the really big thing for me is it would take the pressure off staff coming to council and saying, we really need this vehicle replaced. And not having the facts to show us that it just costs us $10,000 in the past year to keep that vehicle. It also takes the pressure off council because staff can come and say, here's a printout of how much that vehicle's cost us in the last three years. So in terms of staff, council relationships, I think it would definitely be a plus as well.
Counselor Owen, correct me if I'm wrong, but the total asset management plan, should that not be part of it? And I'm not sure where that asset management plan is at at this point.
Well, my understanding is that a number of years ago, we did buy a fleet management program. And that it was not a very good one. Good in terms that it didn't particularly serve our needs. There was also some reluctance on our staff to use it. It is normal operation for any organization, company that has a fleet of vehicles to keep track of all repairs, servicing. That is normal day-to-day procedure in any company that has 25 or 30 vehicles. And like I say, in the long term, it saves you money because yes, the age of the vehicle is a definite factor in the life of the vehicle. But as I found out in my first year at council, when one department asked to have a vehicle replaced because of its age, at that time, I was able to get the printout and it turned out that was the least expensive vehicle to maintain the previous year. So this takes all the guesswork out of it, or a good portion. We can make educated decisions. Whereas this would just be included down the road in asset management. But I think we need it like yesterday, not tomorrow. So that's why I'm pressing now. And we can get a cost on it. They will have time to go out and find a program. There's more than one program available. They can find out what they believe will suit the town's needs the best. And then we can go through a request for proposal. They can include a, they'll have a ballpark figure on the cost. It can be included in the budget and then we can put out a request for proposals. So I think it's very important that we get it. And it will save money in the loan.
Would it be reasonable to ask the Director of Public Works to give us an update on that process? Because we've talked about this, as you said, Counselor Owen, for quite some time. And I may be wrong on And I may be wrong on stating that it's part of the asset management plan. Uh I think it is part of it, but in any event, it's got to move forward. I'm not sure where it's at. Well, uh and we've talked about it and got around in circles.
Um my motion says uh staff be directed to present a fleet management plan for relevant information uh pertinent for the budget approval process. So that's all I'm asking for is a report at this point.
An update.
And then, you know, i- if uh the department decides that it's a priority or if council decides it's a priority, then it can be included and we at least we have a ballpark figure. We know where we're what we're looking at.
Agree. I support that. Any any other comments? We have a motion.
Moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Stacy White, that staff be directed to present a fleet management plan for relevant information pertinent for the budget approval process.
All in favor? Motion carry. Item number eight, introduction reading and consideration of bylaws. Eight point one.
Okay, we have a few here this evening. First one moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Stacy White. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time, numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero eight four being a bylaw to execute an agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services Canada Group Inc. For a pay equity and compensation review.
Any further comments? All in favor? Motion carried. Item eight point two.
The second bylaw is uh the one that we're just giving two readings to for the Enbridge Agreement. Uh so moved by Casey Owens, seconded by Eugene Ivanov. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first and second, sorry, my computer here. First and second time. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero eight five being a bylaw to authorize a franchise agreement between the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake and Enbridge Gas Inc.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Next bylaw moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time, numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero eight six being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an amending agreement with the Ontario Clean Water Agency for operations and maintenance services.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Last bylaw moved by Rick Owen, seconded by Eugene Ivanov. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time, numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk, and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-one dash zero eight seven being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with A. Myron Topsoil Limited for the supply and deliver of winter sand mix and stockpile.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number nine, questions from council to staff. None noted.
Sorry, your worship, there's a couple there to.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
I don't have it in front of me here. I believe the first one was for Counselor White.
Okay, oh, yeah.
And um if Mr. Haas wants to speak to that item.
Certainly, uh through you, your worship. Uh the question itself pertained to status update on the municipal accommodation tax. In June of twenty twenty, staff presented a report on the tax and proposed implementation plan. The major steps of the plan included, number one, deciding the range of the properties covered by the max, by the mat, excuse me, establishing, and that included establishing the amount that should be levied, the end use of the revenue collected, establishing the administrative fee, establishing a collection and remittance pro- process, establishing measures to deal with non-compliance. Second item was define the eligible tourism entity that will partner with the municipality. Possibilities potentially included the Chamber of Commerce and the Golden Corridor Snowdrifters. Items under that collectively determine how the mat revenues will be used by the partner entity, uh formalize the results in a partnership agreement, and create stakeholder communication engagement process. Third item was establishing a bylaw authorizing the municipal accommodation tax. That included, again, establishing the tax payable, the manner in which the taxes be collected, uh the exemptions, rebates, penalties for failing to comply, audit and inspection powers, interest on offsetting taxes and penalties, dispute resolution mechanisms, collection enforcement measures, and other matters councils would consider appropriate. To that, to date, we have compiled the base administration documents needed for implementation, including the bylaw, registration forms, and partnership agreement. I note that these are all based on the sample documents provided to council on June first, as these were well received by council. And we felt it was easier to work with what you have seen. We have also had discussions with partner entities identified in the report, both the Snowdrifters and the Chamber. The project, however, is effectively stalled because we don't have the supports in place as needed to move forward specifically. I've assumed other duties associated with vacant positions in the corporation, meaning less time to attribute to the project. We do not have a treasurer in place. That is critical as the ongoing administration, while implementation and administration is the responsibility of the Treasury Department under the bylaw. We're also facing short staffing and staff turnover, as well as pending process and system changes within the financial systems, which mean that we're not e- able to easily absorb another responsibility. These items have been communicated to council in a previous um session. As well, the partner discussions have not progressed as desired. The Snowdrifters have declined. They cited a lack of resources to administer the program as they are a volunteer organization. The Executive Director for the Chamber expressed similar concerns. Since June, or July, I think, the Chamber has expanded its administrative resources and has agreed now to bring the proposal back to the board for discussion. Where would we go from here? I think that there is a good chance we can get back on track for the new year. Most important factor in that regard is the fact that it appears that a Director of Corporate Services position will be filled soon. That would hopefully ease some of the stress in treasury and lead to progress on hiring a treasurer that so that we can begin establishing the administrative structure to run the map. Partnering may still be a challenge depending on the Chamber's discussion. Should it not work out, the town could look at other alternatives, uh including other community groups. The challenge there is that the community groups are largely volunteer-based, do not have an administrative uh function that could implement the program. There are other options such as Capus Casing um did uh such as setting up its own economic development corporation. That would have to be done, however, prior to the bylaw being passed. So those are some of the challenges and uh where we are sta- uh sitting with the map right now.
Counselor White.
Sorry, thank you, Will, for your update. Um I have missed one meeting in three years and that I'm embarrassed to say that must have been the meeting uh where the update was given. So I do apologize, but thank you very much for your update at this point.
At this point, uh, Will, am I dreaming? Or is it possible to have something in place by January the first? Obviously, we need to to partner this with somebody.
Yeah, the the partner is one aspect of it. The second part of it, probably the more important part, is having the um capability within the corporation to do this. Like right now, uh to be honest, your Treasury Department is stretched far too thin. They can't take it on and it would be unfair even to bring uh to them the bylaws, the registration form, et cetera, and ask them to go through this piece by piece so that we know what works, what doesn't work, and then bring back uh something to council. Bringing you the bylaw or what I've put together as a bylaw, it's not, it's not really the right thing to do because they haven't had a chance to even look at that and make comment on it, make suggestions, rather bring you an end product. Is it possible by January first? I don't know what's happening between now and then. I'd like to think so.
Any idea what the financial implications would be to set up a economic development corporation?
That was looked at in detail in twenty twelve, perhaps, twenty thirteen. Council at that point decided not to proceed. I think that things have changed a little bit since then. I don't know what that would cost. The incorporation is not necessarily the uh the issue. It would be the administrative structure um and how it works. I I I honestly don't know that.
Uh would it be worth, is it Capus Casing that has done that?
Uh Capus Casing and Timmins, um quite a few municipalities have that in place now. And uh that it, I think that it is something that the municipality should look at on a recurring basis, just to stay abreast of that.
Would it be worth checking out to see how how it's working? I I mean, my fear is too, we set up a corporation and we we take in eighty thousand a year or whatever the case may be, hopefully more than that. But uh we end up just paying somebody's wages to do it. Doesn't make much sense.
That is risk. Um I think that it would, my my own feeling is if we can work out with a partner.
Um, yes.
Try to set it up for at least a year to get everything going. Uh had suggested to them that perhaps we could uh sponsor for an intern to help run the program on behalf of the partner, uh just to give them that kind of administrative leg up so that you can see how does it work, what kind of revenues are you bringing in? Um another layer of bureaucracy to do things is not great. But at the same time, asking volunteer organizations to take that on on their own is a challenge.
Counselor White.
So in the um regulation that allows for municipal accommodation tax, there is wording in there that provides a certain percentage of the tax being taken in to devote specifically for administration to run it. So it's not like we would be taking on um more financial responsibility because it the wording's there to take part of that four percent if if that's what council had chosen to pay administration. So there, it wouldn't be an extra fee on top of.
That's correct. You can take a, sorry, I said, you can take a percentage of the fifty percent that you collect as a municipality and attribute it to your administration. I believe most of the uh communities in general that they're prob- I think they're applying roughly about five to ten percent, five percent of the fifty towards administration. That's usually towards a collection, the um registration of the properties, whatever, that kind of side side of it. Would it be sufficient to run a corporation? I don't know, but I think that Counselor White is right. It would offset some of those costs in that regard.
Yeah, I I think my point was, you know, I I don't want to spend eighty thousand to make eighty thousand to break even. That was my fear. Uh Counselor White.
But if we were to set up an ED corporation, that was something that was visited in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. This was long before municipal accommodation tax was even thought of. So if they, we were able to set up that kind of corporation, its mandate would be several things, not just the accommodation tax. So if there was a cost to it, it could be for economic development activities, not specific to this one item.
Agreed.
That is correct, and that's the attraction of the corporation, that it acts as a second lever for effectively a municipality to engage in activities and perhaps uh secure other funding. That you're not going to get operational funding, I want to be clear on that, but um for grants and et cetera for projects. It is an attractive option that, again, I think should be explored. But exploring it just from a status quo, you know, what 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 do you think and what do you think? W- w- bring in, I think, uh Christie Marinig or um Mr. Nado. I mean, he'll be here in a month and just ask how that works. Probably would be give you a better um real perspective on it as opposed to what it theoretically can and can't do.
Yeah, I I know, like in some areas uh where they have, I think North Bay has one or two independent licensing uh business, people operating businesses for changing ownership on vehicles and transfers, and they have other services at the same point. Uh I think even Lisker that has something some similar to that. So that there's some other revenue that an independent could uh generate income from as well as being paid for the uh accommodation tax. But I, maybe I'm just wishful thinking, but I think you can look at all that.
I I think in that regard, uh your worship, you you may be a little off-base. The EDCs normally will not do that, but they may go with selling like trail permits and that, uh partnering with an organization to provide that. See something similar in terms with the Chamber of Commerce slash TEDC. It i- it's a possibility, uh you know, bring the person in. But I I I would suggest like the um Chamber of Commerce, this is relatively new for them to have uh the additional administrative support there. And so that changes the picture. Let them discuss it with their board first and um I can bring back, bring that back as soon as we we do hear something from them.
Counselor White.
Would there be any culinary interest? Because if members of the Chamber of Commerce are in fact uh hotel accommodations, would there not be issues automatically built into that partnership? I don't know if you'll have to investigate that or not.
I i- it is a question that I would pose to the other municipalities. Uh generally, what you, we do see is that the um partner puts together an advisory committee almost separate from it to recommend projects and that, and that's where municipality can participate as well. And usually the um accommodation providers take a seat at that table because after all, they're have a very real stake in it. Um I think in our case, one of the more not unique but s- special pro- uh issues would be that the Chamber of Commerce is a district organization, as is the Snowdrifters. And their mandate is larger than Kirkland Lake itself. So, you know, even if you want to do tourism promotion, say for wildlife uh or wild adventures, and you would put a drone on the Larder River for whitewater rafting, you're effectively promoting another municipality. And chances are that if somebody does come up, they're going to stay in Larder Lake, which is not part of this arrangement. So and and that's just a challenge. I don't think it's unique to us. Um and it may be that it's worth just eating that cost uh uh of doing business because some of the major attractions, you know, come camping, well, go to Esker Lake, that's pretty far out. Uh come water crafting while you have, you know, larder and that. It it's, it just is what it is. That's part of our backyard.
So what's your recommendations as we go forward?
Right now, I would uh definitely recommend letting the Chamber have that conversation and pursuing that as a first line. And I think if we can, you know, they're they're very reasonable people. I think that we can work something out as to how dollars are distributed, what the arrangements are. Um and on the other front is let the new director come in and uh, you know, what are the plans then for upping the staffing or building the capacity in treasury to handle this? What kind of timelines? I think that that person is better qualified to say that to you than I am.
Well, uh I am uh the town's representative on the uh chamber, so I'll uh I'll sit down with some of the members and uh see what their thoughts are on this. I think it's an opportunity for them to cover some of the expenses that the they're struggling with today and might be to our benefit as well.
Yeah, and I did provide them with the uh uh agreement that, well, that I showed in June from um uh excuse me, uh Capus Casing for the uh rate, no, sorry. excuse me, uh Capus Casing for the uh rate, no, sorry, for Cochrane, I think it was. And it spells out very, very clearly what responsibilities are and shows exactly where the if there's a administrative burden where it is, but also how the whole process works. And it's that's really important for them to see and understand because, well, good agreements are good friends, right?
So, uh your discussions with the chamber to date have just been basically telephone calls, eh?
No, I was uh over there and uh primarily, well, only with the executive director, that's my contact.
Yeah, okay, because I don't recall them having any sit-down meetings, possibly been Zoom. Okay, uh before I open my the app, I'll sit down with you uh before I talk to anybody at the chamber. Let's see if we could get them on board. I think that that's the ideal uh situation, I think, for us and might help them as well. Council doesn't have any objection to that. Better try and move this forward.
Okay, we'll move on to the second question submitted by Counselor Ivanoff. Counselor Ivanoff asked, in March of this year, a fire occurred on Kirkpatrick Street with two buildings involved in the fire. Our fire department did amazing job controlling the fire. However, now the remainder of these structures were demolished, and as of today, the rebel is still there behind a fence. Who is responsible to remove the remainder of the debris? Uh Director Jim Roman provided a response. Uh Mr. Roman, if you wanted to elaborate for discussion?
Yeah, um certainly, I I hoping to keep this more general and not not address the the specific concern. But um matters such as this are dealt progressively uh through informal and formal uh communications um with with the property owner. It is the property owner's responsibility to uh deal with with situations such as that. Um ultimately, it it ends up in the property standards order uh which is issued against the property. And um if it's not complied with, then uh the municipality can uh perform the work themselves and charge it back to the role number. So um with 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 this specific concern uh that 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 was being addressed, uh we are in the midst of this process. It it's it's being dealt with.
Counselor Ivanoff?
Yeah, no, it's been uh seven months since there was the fire there. Not that I, you know, I mean, I just see this pile of rubble sitting there. Somebody's paying for that fencing that's that's around that property, and I'm thinking it's probably rental. Um I can't imagine the cost getting any cheaper as as time goes on, and winter's about to set in, so that's likely going to be under a pile of snow in the next month or so. Um that's my concern. I, you know, I I understand that uh you know, there may be an issue uh where property owners have maybe very little insurance or not enough to cover the uh the removal of that debris. I I'm not certain what the situation is, but uh you know, it's something we have to, as a town, have to look at because it looks pretty bad, and it's right in front of the two Catholic churches. So that's another concern. People are going by there all the time and and seeing this uh horrible sight. I mean, I thank God, nobody was was killed. But it's just a reminder of of something that has to be taken care of, and it's not you know, it's it just isn't, it's just sort of been sitting there and ignored. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Yeah, if I may add to that comment, uh I think we're trying to avoid that situation like we had on McKelvey where the fire uh damaged property sat there for two and a half years. Um a little different situation, I realize, but uh we really don't want to go through that again. So whatever we can to do, move forward on it as soon as possible. Uh Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I uh was also approached by a couple that live in town. Um and they were voicing concerns, especially uh with the churches being there and the amount of people that go by and and what an ugly mess it is. I know the the people that own the one property, they're good people. Um I'm sure they're very approachable on this issue. Um I did advise the couple that approached me to uh put in a request for service. I don't know whether they did or not, but um it is high-traffic area and 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 people are asking for it to be cleaned up, and I know this is a touchy area. It's one thing if the building was fully insured and the insurance company was going to pay for it. Um that's probably not the case in in this situation. But it it still has to be cleaned up, I think, in a timely manner. I mean, we're trying to instill pride in the community and still pride in the neighborhoods um that and and I'm sure Jim is dealing with this, and it's a delicate situation. Thank you.
Counselor White?
Sorry, Jim, to bring this back to a more general conversation, this falls under the property standard or community standard bylaw?
This is a property standard issue.
And we don't have any specific timelines written into that. Is that correct? Does it fall on the CBO timeline?
No, this this is it's more of a bylaw enforcement issue.
Counselor Owens? So does this mean that we could modify our bylaw? Because I I'm not sure, like, not that I've traveled a lot throughout Ontario, but I've like going in other municipalities where buildings burned down. A- and I I don't recall ever seeing piles of rubble staying there for two two years, or like, is this something that as a municipality, we can change to give us more power to do something quicker, or does somewhere the province supersedes us on this one? Supersede?
Well, we we do have the authority to act. The 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 intent has always been to to try and work with property owners. Give them the opportunity, um you know, work with them. Uh if they if they need relief from tipping fees or something, there there's usually an issue why they're they're not proceeding with the work. And so we we try to do it at first, as I said, more informally. But progressively, and and until we get to that point where we issue an order. And uh we're 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 at that point, you know, their their orders have been issued, so we can act.
Thank you. Counselor White?
So the town does provide other kinds of services on a fee basis, such as cleaning of tombstones. Uh at one time, we used to do water flushing or some something like when your pipes freeze, we would do that and charge you. Is there a possibility in these special circumstances that the town would be able to do the work immediately for an unfortunate family that had these special circumstances come about? So that the community is clean and up to a certain standard? And the property owner isn't put under financial hardship either? Is there a balance that we can get so that we don't have to escalate it to a property standard? Rather than just taking care of it and providing a service to that community member?
At council's direction, we 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 could do something. We we would not proceed in that fashion otherwise.
So perhaps what I'm getting at is maybe um another motion can be brought forward at the time for staff to investigate the value of offering this service. So that if it ever comes up in the future, you have wording behind you already in place. Thank you, Jim.
Counselor Shaba?
Yeah, um before we do that, uh Jim, can you take us through the enforcement process? Because you said this is a matter of enforcement. Uh you you know, is there a uh a process whereby three strikes, you're out, or notification, or ticket, or whatnot? What is the process of enforcement? As we currently have?
There there's an order issued for for them to comply, for them to clean up the the property. There's a time limit specified.
After.
I believe it's fourteen days.
Fourteen days? There will be notification?
Yes, uh which we can, we can act, we can go in and and clean it up.
Okay, what? So this particular property is is more than fourteen days, obviously, so but then we have never acted, so.
Well, it's fourteen, I I'm I'm not, I I don't have the date of that that the orders were issued, so I'm not I'm I'm not
Okay.
when the fourteen days applies, but I I do know that orders have been issued, yes.
Okay. But it's it's just that if we don't clean up the enforcement process, then we're really wasting our time to have another uh motion on top of another motion. I mean, it has got to be very uh clear a clear cut to everyone, you know, this is the first strike, first notification, after which the second one. This is what's going to happen. People have to really know that if if I don't do this by day number thirty or day number forty or whatnot, the town will be within its rights to come in and start to do it, and then bill bill back to the to the property owner. So we have to put something like that in place so that we will be very aware, but it has to be fair too. Across the board, it doesn't matter how much if you demolish a five-story building, if it's a five-story debris or one story. People really have to have uh time, and we have to give them time, but then we have to make sure that after after that time, this is what's going to happen. And we'll make it happen, because if you say something is going to happen, we don't make it happen, people don't don't care. That's it. Yes or no? Hey, you told me after fourteen days, if I don't clean up, um that will be it. And I, you know, I don't want to name names. I remember living in Shapie, going on top of the hill. And there was an issue there for many, many years that, I mean, you know, we can't get that place cleaned up, but it is cleaned up now. But we we have to be very much uh have a process that everybody will understand, and we have to act. I mean, I don't see any motion now being of any anything, uh we're not going to have something that, you know. If you don't pay a debt to the bank, after which time they'll come and replace your bicycle or whatever it is, like you owe them. That's it.
I'd be surprised, Jim, if there's there isn't something in the municipal act to cover that, because it it's it's a common occurrence, well, in Kirkland Lake it is anyway. I agree with that. Well, we know in, within a fourteen-year day timeframe, something is going to happen, one way or the other. That's fair to say.
Yes.
Uh Counselor White?
So we've talked about this issue, and and it really comes down to the derelict building issue again.
Yep.
Oh, it it comes back to that. So this council, since day one, uh the mayor included, has been pretty forceful in their speak about, we want these issues resolved. In our bylaw, there is the ability to work with property owners. Perhaps we can agree as a council that that time has passed, it's been decades. Some of these derelict buildings, not this one specifically, but to bring it back to a general conversation, it has been decades. They've been sitting for decades, whether it be in federal or Chappy or on premier. These these buildings, it's time to take this uh issue seriously. And perhaps it's time to no longer work with these property owners to actually take the power written into our bylaws in hand and do what needs to be done.
I mean, this didn't happen overnight, Jim, so it, but it's it's added a lot of frustration to not just members of council, but people in in the community who, as Counselor Owen put it, they take a lot of pride in ownership. And you look next door and you got a pile of scrap. Uh I think we acted reasonably quick on Station Road. And if that's what we need to do with a lot of these buildings, that's we, council, I think, fully supports that.
Okay.
No, any uh counselor? Yeah, go ahead, Jim. Just a sec. So we'll leave that for you to mull over, but uh Counselor Owen has a some comments.
Um just to follow up on what Counselor White said. Uh work with the property owners is a two-way street, um which I don't think we've recognized as a two-way street. We've worked with the property owners, but in some cases, the property owners have not worked with the town. And in those cases, I think we need to be uh more arbitrary and say, look, we've been dealing with you, we offered you this, this, and this, and this extension. You have not acted, so now we are going to take action. But I I think in the past, we've the I and I can't speak to what you know, what the decision-making process was, but I think that we tended to um you know, feel sorry for the people and and say, okay, you know, it's it's difficult circumstances. But it is a two-way street, and if the property owner's not working with the town, then I think that's when the town's obligation to the property owner ends. We issued the order, and then we do what we have to do. Um that doesn't make us a mean organization. We're still giving the property owner the option of working with the town, and there may be special circumstances where accommodations have to be made for a short period of time. I I'd like to see that option stay, but if they're not working with us, then I think that's when we issue the order. Thank you.
No further comments? Give a motion to receive that.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Eugene Ivanoff. Be it resolved that the questions from council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Uh notice of of motion. Counselor White?
As per previous conversations this evening, I'd like to bring back uh a motion for next meeting. Let staff be directed to bring back a report on the development of an economic development corporation detailing what functions the EDC would provide and the benefits that would be for the town of Kirkland Lake.
Yeah, we haven't set a date on that uh Counselor White, but I think that when we meet with uh the gentleman from Capus Casing uh on the solar project, that we might be able to get some information as to how they put that together uh as well. So it'd be nice to hear that, if it's working, is it worthwhile? But we should at least have a look at this and pursue it, see if it makes sense. Anyone? I don't see any, don't hear any. You have notion, motion to receive not required. Uh Counselor uh reports? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate the the number of residents that have decorated their houses for Halloween. Um there's certainly some interesting and scary and uh houses around town. Um I know that uh when you get to my age, sometimes you forget what it's like to be four, five, six, seven, eight years old. Uh but I see it in my grandchildren, they're, you know, it's really exciting time for them, and I just want to thank the residents that have decorated their homes and it it's great for the young people of this town. Thank you.
This morning, I attended a meeting with the Salvation Army Ontario. I guess Director of Operations and. He was asking what they can contribute or any gaps in services. In the communities that they could fulfill. At least an hour discussion, which was very good. They've got some ideas of some projects that they've applied for funding. And I will say they're. I think they're very good for the community and and will help the people in need. So I'd like to thank the Salvation Army for the opportunity of talking to them and and. Finding out what their their thoughts are with some of the. Addiction problems, mental health and and a few other things and housing. They're working on it as well and. On behalf of council, I'd like to thank them for their contribution because I think they've got a couple of real good projects that they're proposing. Which I can't say at this time, but hopefully they'll come to fruition.
Moved by Rick Owens, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Additional information. Item twelve point one, vaccination update.
Thank you worship through you to council. This is an additional item added to the agenda as of yesterday or today. We received an email from Dr. Glenn Corniel from the Teniscamy Health Unit. And in bold letters in his email states that in the strongest possible terms. That all local employers institute a workplace COVID nineteen vaccination policy for their business or organization. So this is what Dr. Corniel is recommending for us, so we wanted to put it forward for your consideration. If you wish to have staff bring a policy forward or not.
Councillor White?
Absolutely. Now that the THU has reached out with their expertise. We need to follow our health authority, so please have staff, direct staff, bring back a report. On a vaccination policy for all contractors, volunteers and employees, including council, please.
Councillor Owens?
I agree. As a board member of the Teniscamy Health Unit, it's something that we brought forward at THU a few meetings back is. We are leaders in the community. We are an employer in the community. We have to make sure that our community, community maintains. Safe practices and this is what we all have to do our part right now.
Agree. We've been very fortunate. I think we've gotten great direction and leadership from THU during this difficult time period. Of the pandemic, so I see no reason why we wouldn't follow through with their recommendations and I fully support it. By councillor Owen?
I am not an anti vaccine person. I am fully vaccinated. I did go through quite a thought process before I decided to get vaccinated. And I made a decision on based on what I believe was right for me and my family. However. I firmly believe that what someone puts into their body. Is their choice. And that there are other measures, however, I believe less effective, but still very effective if followed properly. Help contain spread. Of COVID. So I I would not be in support of this, but I want to make it perfectly clear. That I do support vaccines and that I am fully vaccinated, but I also support. The right that I have in terms of all my other medications. And that is I choose whether or not to take them. And that will be the reason that I'm not supporting this suggestion.
Despite us agreeing with the request. We haven't got a mandate to enforce it, so it's still up to the individual business. But any of the town properties or facilities. Our intention is to to follow their their request. Is that a fair comment? Based on what the minister, the health unit is requesting. I mean, you correct me if I'm wrong, Casey, but.
I agree. We are a large employer in the town of Kirk Lake. We employ over two hundred, I don't know what the exact figure is, but two hundred and some employee. We are one of the larger employers. We have to show example and we have to do what's right for our community. And we can't force little businesses to do it. That's up to the individual owner. But as a corporate citizen, as a corporate employer, we have to do what's right for our employees. The members our employees interact with and it's our part.
Agree with you totally. Any other comments?
Yeah, this is just about bringing in the policy. Let's see the policy first. Maybe we'll be all inclusive and address the concerns that you have. So I'm I'm not going to prejudge that, the policy. I'd like to see the policy and then we can turn around and discuss. Some of the, the content or the merits of the merits. Of of the policies. So I'm in full support of bringing the policy. I mean, we just can't say when I'm going to do anything. You know, we gotta do something. And that's something is bringing in the policy first and then we can discuss. Make sure that it's all inclusive.
Councillor Owen?
Yes, I kind of put the horse before the cart there and councillor. Lad pointed out to me, so I will support bringing in a policy. I believe we already have a policy to encourage our employees. I'm not sure, but. Councillor Shaba is correct. Bring the policy forward and then depending on what the policy says, we can discuss it, agree with it, disagree with it at that point in time. So my apologies.
Any other comments? We have a motion?
Do have a motion and I just wanted to note that staff are discussing this for if we can bring a policy forward. We do plan to do so as quickly as possible, so we will plan to have it for next meeting for you. So I have a motion moved by Stacy White, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that the email from the health unit regarding a vaccination policy be received. And that staff be directed to prepare and present a vaccination policy for consideration at the next regular meeting of council.
Any further comments? All in favor? Motion carried. We have a motion to move in camera.
I have a motion, sorry about this. Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to section two thirty nine two. To discuss one potential litigation matter and one matter relating to an identifiable individual and labor relations.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Go ahead.
Matters arising from the closed session? None noted? Confirmation by law?
Moved by Lad Shaba, seconded by Casey Owens. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read at first, second and third time. Numbered pass signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty one dash zero eight eight being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held October nineteenth, twenty twenty one.
All in favor? Motion carried. Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Stacy White, seconded by Rick Owen. Be it resolved that council adjourn the October nineteenth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Motion carried.